Joshua City Council meeting to order. We'll start out in the work meeting. One-on-one Southland, Joshua, Texas. After the work session, we'll go into the regular meeting. This is something to be open to being laws of the state of Texas. This is an FYI. Everybody in here had the temperature taken. We are six feet apart. That's why we're not wearing our hats. For those of you on Zoom, we do have a way that you can raise a flag and actually ask a question. When we get to certain agenda items, if some of y'all have questions, I will be checking with you. We do have a quarrel present. First item is going to be our budget workshop. We're going to be discussing the 2020-21 workshop. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, so earlier today, I sent you guys, it should be in front of you. I sent it by email and I printed it out for you today to look at. The, you know, the bird's eye view of the global budget, the first draft of the global budget for next year. As I mentioned in the email earlier to the council, the department heads around on that. What you're seeing right now is basically what I do every year, which is the first gasp or the first look at putting everything into the budget. And by what I mean, everything, anything that is, has been in the works, that is planned. I, you know, the CIP, the CIP budget, everything that's in that, in that column for 2021 is included here except the strength that will approve on the bond because obviously we'll have a different funding source for that. So it's not going to, that's not going to necessarily be detrimental to the numbers you're seeing here because the revenue, since we haven't issued the bonds yet, the revenue we actually don't have a house. So I didn't include that word because I don't have the revenue to offset it. That'll kind of even itself out later on in the summer. I can literally follow me actually issue the bonds. Now, what I do have in terms of the bonds in that second, that second column, the debt service, okay? And that is an estimated debt service that is fairly close to what our debt service was the year prior to paying off one of our general fund bonds. You remember last year when we, when we scheduled for the bond election? We timed it to where we'd be issuing it this year after one of our general fund notes was rolling off. We would be adopting a new one. So the plan was there is to minimize any, or minimize as much as possible, any tax changes. In fact, changes to the tax rate on the INS side, if any. So based on the size of the bond and the rates that we've been, we've been seeing is I anticipate a even debt service. So what we have on the books this year and the INS rate that we have this year is likely to remain the same. So what that means is their overall tax rate that we have is just over seventy-six cents should remain fairly stable. Okay? So that, then, but that is an estimate. We won't know our debt services until we actually issue the bonds. But we'll have an estimate in the actual proposed budget. Now, like I mentioned in the email, this is not the proposed budget. This is not what I'm proposing to you all. It's just putting everything in there and really gives, should give you a really good view of what we look at more first looking at, you know, draft of the budget, which is basically, there's never enough money for everything that we need. Okay? So if you, if you look at, I want to focus specifically on the general fund, which is obviously the far left-hand column. Because that is, the taxes there, which include both property taxes, sales tax, and heating tax that we have is going to be, is going to be more included in that. Now, you have to keep in mind, that number, which includes two things, these are some of the assumptions that I did not include on any type of, you know, additional page here, but I did mention the email earlier. That assumes a three percent growth rate in sales tax. We're about three percent ahead of budget this year in sales tax is one of the really good things. One of the good pieces of news that we've been kind of seeing the last couple of months is the, the virus issue, the economic shutdown that happened in early March. We had not felt any effects of that in terms of our budget and sales tax. Remember last year, the budget for this budget year, I had estimated a four percent growth rate. We're three percent ahead of budget. Last year's true growth rate was eight percent. So we're really clicking along with our, just a little under the same growth rate we had last year. Of course, we budgeted, as we talked about last time, we budgeted so conservatively, we dropped that back, but we're really about seven percent a year over year. In our, our ZAC tax software that we use to track this, has us on a year on a dollar-to-dollar basis, a little over one percent. So this, this tax, this tax number, this first draft assumes a three percent growth rate. It also assumes property tax revenue based on our June preliminary numbers. Okay? This is the most recent number I had. I plugged in the homestead exemption, which lowered our available revenues in the general fund for about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It also, our, our most recent protest loss number was fifteen million. You remember, I dropped that to five because that's typically what happens. You say a low number in the main, in the main preliminaries. Then the number spikes because everybody gets their, their protest in. And then as they indicate those things, it drops down to around four million a year. So just be conservative. I'll drop it to five. So we're, we're, because of the protest laws and because of the homestead exemption, we're really not seeing a whole much, much of a difference in available revenues when it comes to property taxes year to year. What, what this doesn't include, it doesn't assume, is any of our, obviously our rates. We won't know what our rates are going to be until certified numbers come out, come out in about ten days. And to keep in mind that this year, because of the changes in the state law, we actually have three rates that we have to calculate now. One is the no new revenue rate, which used to be the effective rate. The voter approval rate, which used to be the rollback rate, and for our cities, cities under thirty thousand, the de minimis rate. So basically, you add those three rates, or you add the, the, the no new revenue rate, the de minimis rate, and the INS rate or the debt service rate. That's going to give us our total rate. Okay? So we won't know what those rates are. And so these, obviously, the property tax numbers are going to, those are going to change significantly once we get those, once we get those rates in. Everything else are, again, kind of best projections when it comes to year end. Project the rest of this when you're out. And then I use a trend analysis, what's happened on the ground the last couple of, three, four, five years, to try to determine what is going to happen next year of some of these, some of these others. So that gets us about four point eight billion in total revenues estimated, you know, the first, first draft. The transfers in, that's one sixty-four, three twenty. That is from Top B for to offset the maintenance operations cost for the park. Okay, the Parks Department. If you remember historically, Top B has funded almost all of the cost of that over the last couple of years to try to free up Top B's fund balance to rebuild that. We've slowly been taking that on in the general fund, which we've all agreed was that at this point, that's where it should be. As we've grown as a community, we may be able to absorb those costs. And so it's, it's, it's really putting parks, at least in terms of the personnel. I mentioned this and I, you know, I won't go too far into it because we'll still be looking at the financial statements for this month. But we're making some internal accounting changes to make things a little bit more consistent in terms of what, what costs are being placed in the budget. So for instance, all of the personnel costs in parks, because we've, because I combined public works and parks, the personnel lines, so the first ten or eleven lines of the departmental budget have all been moved under public works. Both Vince and Thomas, and those costs associated with employment are under public works and Kristen's supervision at this point. So the only thing you'll see in parks, and the only thing Top B will see when I print your budget to them next Monday, is the MNO stuff. Just the operational part of what they actually are still funding. So that's what the transfers in are. The expenditures, you can see the different aspects of expenditures there. And then what we, what we do is we have changed building code and compliance to development services. And that's where we made that change. Our engineering, planning, and inspections have been wrapped into that department. As more of a planning and departmental, our departments, our development service departments, instead of just building a code. You feel like, well, the way we're, the way we're doing things is that's, that's more accurate to look at it that way. And then what we do, in accordance with auditing principles and GAS rules, we take out the debt service and the capital outlays for each department and list those separately. Or don't, if you remember, in the audit, they, they do that as well. That's just because technically speaking, those aren't a part of the day-to-day MNO costs associated with the department. Those are, those are kind of, they're not, they're not, you don't need them to operate that day. They just start kind of all what they are. Capital outlays. So the debt service there is going to be for equipment that we already have on the books. Most of that debt service, the one thirteen, sort of in the public works department, had two large pieces of equipment that we financed. Almost a hundred and three thousand of that comes from those, those two pieces of equipment. And then the capital outlays, those are going to be anything that's under our capital fund balance policy, which is anything over twenty-five thousand. It's put in the CIP plan. Anything underneath that, it's put into specific accounts for each department, depending on how much they cost. And so that is the total that has been requested in capital outlays for all the departments.
Does that include the ones that you've got in the package?
Yes. Yes. So now, and so when we get to,
There's a lot of little ones in there.
Yes. So this, yes, on this page here, well, some of these, some of these aren't, aren't necessarily going to be capital outlays. Are you talking about this list here, Gary?
Yeah.
Yes, so some of those aren't necessarily going to be capital outlays. Some of those are going to be in there. Some of those are going to be either in building R and M or some other, some other accounts that are more accurately described what, where the extent of those.
But all of these are listed in the initial draft.
Yes. Yeah. So the list that you see on page three, those are the, all of those have been included into the departmental budgets, but you'll see in that, those, that summary page on the first page. Of course, the big one here, when it comes to transfers, is transfers out. Okay, that is a combination of everything that is on the second page, which is the CIP for next year. Everything has been approved in terms of equipment. And then the biggie, which is the Joshua Station, Joshua Station infrastructure, when it comes to the Hollywood one seventy-four project that is going to, and then the public infrastructure, the Pendex Express, Starbucks project. Okay? So that, that is the big one. So you have that, plus you have about six hundred, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the CIP that comes with that, with that. So all of those monies would come out of general fund. Now, you have to keep in mind that except for the CIP equipment, we include the Joshua Station infrastructure in the CIP now. It's not in there one that we adopted back in April. That will be updated to the, for, for when you guys actually adopt the budget. So you keep in mind that those funds for that coming, are coming out of general fund reserves. The restricted reserves that can only be used in the tips. So about half a million dollars of our reserves, general fund, we can't use for anything other than the tip anyway. So that's what that's, that's what that's for. Now, this year, we did have, trying to get ahead of the cost of this, so we're looking at about five thirty to six hundred thousand dollars for the cost of this project. Top A contributed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that infrastructure this year. They're actually paying, they actually paid off one of their notes this year. So freeing up that, freeing up some of that fund balance. I have budget of another hundred thousand coming out of Top A. That's what Top A does, is infrastructure for economic development purposes. So when it's all said and done, we'll have about two hundred and fifty thousand from Top A in there for those, for that, and about a hundred thousand in restricted tip funds in the general fund to pay for that. So we should have plenty of money to, to do all those in the next, in the next twelve, eighteen months, depending on how the rest of the process works. And we, I can certainly answer questions about that. So again, I've kind of gone over the first two pages and kind of deteriorate his question in terms of what on page three is included. So everything that's on page three should be, and I double-checked and have the department heads checked as well. I have a, this sheet here, the global sheet, is the first of many sheets in the workbook that we use to do the budgeting. So each, obviously, as you remember in the budget, each department has their own sheet. This is just a summary. It beats all. This sheet gets the numbers from the departmental sheets. So everything that you're seeing on page three is, is in the summary. Now, obviously, as we go through this every year, not everybody gets everything they want or need. Sometimes they don't get anything they want or need. I usually, what I usually done is wait until certified numbers come out, figure out what the tax rate is going to be, figure out what type of revenues will be available, and then back into what our base budget is. Sometimes we're able to squeeze some things in we've been needing. Sometimes things get pushed back into the years because it's just not enough money for it. You know, our, our, our MO, not even know that our MO has been trying to keep the tax rate as stable as possible. You guys lowered it last year by a penny. And then, of course, we adopted the homestead exemption this year. So, you know, those two things together, obviously, are going to lower our revenue. So what I wanted to do this year is we have no idea what the rates are going to do and how they're going to affect our available property tax rates. And obviously, that's not going to affect the, the debt service. Okay? So all the, as historically and as even the new changes, it don't, it don't affect the debt service rate because you've got to pay your debt first. And then everything else kind of flushes off on that. So what I wanted to do is bring this to you so you can kind of see a bird's eye view of what, what we, what we're dealing with. Okay? And how, when we first look at the budget, show you kind of what, you know, the, the departments have been asking for. And obviously, and I grant, I just got this to you guys today, so I don't expect you to look through all of the funding request forms and understand. And I've read why they're asking that. But I also invited, I came using your email, and a few of them are here tonight. Anybody ask me some requests? If y'all wanted to ask them directly about the requests, and they're here to kind of plead their case in a way, and answer any direct questions towards that. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions on the global budget, or if you guys want to start in on the additional funding request.
I've got a question on the global. Okay. Final column on the right, first draft. We've got a total revenues and other sources of eight million ninety-five thousand. The ending fund balance shows a negative two thou, two million two hundred and seven thousand. But your total expenditures and other uses was eight million six hundred and ten. So that, the number that,
Yeah, so again, some of these, the debt service rate, okay, the debt service. Some of my columns here are the total. I want, I want you to focus on the general fund tonight. This one takes into account about three, four other special revenue funds that I had. I don't have all the numbers for yet. So it's throwing, so that, that far right column, which is, everything is throwing those totals off. So tonight is just the
General.
General fund, because that'll be, that's what, that's what's going to really, a lot of, a lot of what's going to be in the global budget in that far right column is kind of already baked in the cake. Some of the things in our other funds, we can't really change anyway. Okay? And I need some year-end numbers for the court security fund, the court technology fund, the hotel occupancy taxes, a project we're still working on. We haven't found all numbers on yet. So it's a lot of what is, is master, is spent about four of those in the rest of the workload. So when you don't have the numbers in there, it's not going to populate here correctly.
Just out of curiosity, what is our general fund reserve balance right now?
It's about one point five million.
That's a very tough one.
Yeah. Okay, so getting at, at about the level that we talked about last year, your,
Our fund balance, our fund balance policy is just over one point two. So one point two million. Basically, and the fund balance policy is twenty-five percent of basically our budget, annual budget, MNO lots. So when you, you cut everything you can cut, what you still need to actually provide services, and it's one point two million.
Yeah, because just looking at it, it looks like we're about nine hundred thousand dollars, you know, under here.
Right. Yeah. And obviously, this would not be something I would, you know, anything I bring you guys is going to abide all of the policies.
Yeah, this is not, this is just a big piece. And then, okay, now, the first important to the calendar to maintain.
Right.
Exactly. How far do you want to cut into? Do you want to cut it all out? If we're not going to cut it all, then where are we going to find nine hundred thousand dollars, you know, within this spread?
Right.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right. Josh is next. We're moving over.
Well, yeah, so I want to be clear. I'm, that's what I'm asking for tonight. That's exactly what you said.
He did just the global. Now we need to narrow down into the, the items on page three, is what I'm assuming.
Well, if you guys have these specific questions, like,
Take any.
Anyway, what happens is I get all these requests, and I am the ultimate insider in what, what we can afford and what we can't. But we have so many needs now. And it's at, we're kind of in that catch twenty-two. We have had some growth. You know, we had double-digit growth in seventeen and eighteen, it didn't drop, you know, at eleven, a couple percent. It's been a drop all the way to five percent last year in our, in our appraisal values. So, you know, while we had a couple of years that were really shone rough, a lot of that was due to appraisal. That's why you have such a high protest loss, right, every year. So many people are protesting your values. And, and I have no idea what that number is going to be this year. And with, with the reduction in the property tax rate that we did this past year, the homestead exemption, I, I don't, I have, literally have no idea. I can't, I can't even like guess now, so until my rates come out. So what I'm asking you guys to do is, while I've kind of been the arbiter of these requests, right? I kind of plug in what, you know, based on priorities and what the need is, and maybe there's some things that we've been waiting three or four years to do. And I finally came over, squeezed those in, that sort of thing. Or, you know, if y'all just want to give me some broader direction and focus on public works, focus on public safety, because, you know, those are the two, our biggest, our main, our main issues. But not every, not everything is going to be answered, you know? We've got personnel issues in both of those departments specifically. And as we grow, we're going to need more personnel. You know, it's just kind of, it's just kind of how, kind of how it works. So this is more of a, I'm not asking you guys to take a red pen and start striking things. But as you see these, these requests in front of you, you've got through the department that's here, if you want to ask them anything specific about this, they're here to answer those, those questions. And then in terms of the CIP, those requests, everything globally that we talked about, all the issues that I brought up and all the different variables. You know, what do you, what do you guys want me to focus on?
Lots of stretch and church.
I may even say that.
Weird, that's my theory.
No, actually, this is in order of our, of our accounting. So the, what you see here in the general fund is fund one hundred. The middle number is the department. Maybe just go in order of our funds, so.
House, you really need to.
Yes, sir, I really do.
I've got a question for the police department chief. What is, I've noticed our dollar value of fines has been going down considerably. What do we get in fines per month, right, tickets?
That would probably be a question that Carl, I don't know what it is.
I started thinking, if it's not much, I don't see replacing ticket riders for eighteen thousand dollars. I didn't bring it in.
They issued, you remember, they issued ticket riders. They were purchased in twenty twelve. They're iconic devices. They work today. But what we're doing, in my mind, when we're doing budgeting, we're looking. Reality is, people will be here for the pay for twenty-four months. You're just going to buy them, and then they'll sell them all. Already have some transfer issues where the officers got the other, they docked the ticket rider, that information transferred, so you're, your customer's name is Dr. Carla. And sometimes that information is there, but it's the police officer that will go, if you ever listen to this shit, let that. I think that problem is going to, to continue to manifest itself. It probably increases because of the age of ticket riders. So I think, I think there needs to be some awareness that that is a potential problem, and that's to be addressed sometime in the future.
Okay, so I'd like to know, Josh, is what, what are we bringing in?
Well, I've budgeted about a hundred thousand dollars that first was, and that's,
That's like, that was like plans in four years, I think.
Right.
So how much of it's actually the ride tickets?
I, I don't know that number offhand, George. I mean, it's, it's, I, I think the, it's a catch twenty-two. Over the last, you know, four or five years, that number specifically for, now, we don't, we don't break it out specifically for citations. It's just, you know, five, because some of, some of the, some of the fees that are included in a citation are a lot of cost actually going to other funds. Those, the court security and building funds, some of the, you know, pennies, sometimes pennies go over there. And so we actually have to break parts some of those. We actually have to go in there and break parts of that. So when we, when we should have fines, full features and all that. What do you call it? Yeah, fines and full features. But it's all, the, the biggest chunk of that is going to be citations. Full features are, as it stands, not going to be a citation.
Right.
But that has, you know, those, those, that number has dropped twenty, thirty percent every year for the last four or five years.
That's what I'm saying. If we're not bringing in that much money, is it really necessary to replace the ticket boxes?
Well, like Chief said, he and I talked about that. It's kind of a coin flip of whether you give them or lie, or you're out of them. But it's one of those things, if you don't have them, they're malfunctioning, and you need to run a citation and that, that is, you know, technical issues because they're on their last leg, you're kind of confusing that.
So what do we have as a backup currently, Chief? So you've got a, you've got a officer out there, and the rider goes down totally. Does he have a backup where you run a citation?
No, we don't. We don't. We would get somebody else to run a citation or issue one of them. You could go to like, you know, if you're not needing ticket citation, that would margin that increase. There'd be some other things that would be.
Is it staffing with that?
Sure, sure.
Judy, please, you said we need eight of them. We've kind of worked on the vehicles where we've staggered the replacement of vehicles. Is there a way to stagger the replacement of these? Or we might buy like three or, or, you know, like on a four-year schedule?
Yeah, I don't think that's probably a very effective way to do that because vehicles, it tends to work pretty good if you can, you buy a vehicle, and it's, it's a big thing, and it doesn't, it doesn't make significant changes. These are like your cell phones. You know, one year you've got this, and it, it doesn't change tremendously, but you may have different charges. You may have, you might have maybe a little bit replaced. I think it's better to buy them all at one time. That's not to say that you couldn't buy four this year and buy four next year, but you have, you have two different systems out there.
It runs off different software.
Yeah, I know that this figure doesn't include software. My presumption is that you can run both versions and have it effectively transferred to the courts. But I don't know that for a background to share.
Now, what about the availability of using court technology fund? And I think we may have included there, if there's any funding there, is that able to be utilized?
Historically, we were using that fund for ticket riders, the annual, the annual maintenance on those. But we extinguished the fund balance and had fun by doing that. And so I moved that over to the PD to be able to re-establish the fund balance on that fund.
Yes, so that would, this is just a,
And certainly, you know, we were looking at about thirty thousand dollars a year on maintenance, service maintenance, the annual service of those.
And on citations, I'm sure we've already tapped out what we can do there, and just to see what the process is. Is there anything where you can assess a five-dollar technology fee on any citation issue or anything to be able to climb for some of this?
Well, as I was talking about earlier, there are, that's how those two funds are funded, is those little, those little percentages on the site. Yes, that's our, that's how those funds are, it's like, for mine. And as long as we use, as long as we use those funds specifically for those things, maybe we can continue to have that. But there's, there's, those are restricted funds, kind of like the tip funds are, as you call them.
What sort of go, these are still a police department. What about this carpet now? You said part of it was, it didn't look right. Yeah, well, I've got a fine site, but you know, everything has to look right.
The back part of the building, we took care of them out two, maybe four years ago. We could, we could house it down and fix them all. We made a fair investment. And it could prove the, the work environment there. It's, it's in very good shape. We didn't do anything in the front of the building. For a variety of reasons, obviously, cost of one of them. But the carpet, the carpet, same thought of those there. We're starting to have, I've got one office that has a place where there's water leak. I've got the records room, that's the carpet taken down and pushed back down where they did some funding repair. And then I've got one of my investigators' offices, it's kind of got the door threshold, the carpet's starting to roll up. It's normal wear stuff. It's, you know, it's, it doesn't look, it doesn't look as professional as it should, and it creates a little bit of that.
Have you looked at using some other, besides carpet? I mean, carpet wears out very quickly. Have you looked at using some of this?
Significantly more.
The what, what's?
We do the tile.
Oh, yeah, tile wood. But I mean, I've talked about some of the wood laminates and stuff like that. Those last pretty good. But it's just an office. It shouldn't be getting that much traffic.
The vinyl, the vinyl laminate.
Yeah.
Probably the laminate planks.
I mean, if you could maybe check into that, see if some of those others, because like I said, if we're talking about just offices or not, I try to carry it inside. I think those costs can come down some. And plus, the maintenance of landing floors is a whole lot cheaper. You don't have the issues with the water leaks and things like that. And the cameras, this, that's looking at the different areas inside the police station.
A big deal on cameras, maybe is the property and evidence. We've got an area of the store, store evidence. Prior to it being secured in the evidence room, we've got cameras inside evidence room. A big deal on cameras, maybe it's property and evidence, we've got an area of the store, uh, store evidence, prior to being secured in the evidence room, we've only got cameras inside evidence room. Those really absolutely have to be there. We've had some cameras. The, the system of a guy that, that director, over two thousand four, I would say, um, we've got a couple of cameras that are big ones.
Could you, have you thought about talking to the, uh, Josh's, Joshua citizens' police department, they have a pretty good fund balance? And they could probably recover a couple of these items. I think that's a suggestion, that's what that, uh, was put together for, was to help out with police expenses. Uh, I don't believe there's any restriction on what it has to be, so if we could get that, or expand it from a different source, like I said, I think that's pretty good dollars.
That's, that's certainly possible to do that, I think. It depends on the perspective of those members and what they, what they think is probably the best of all.
Right, no, you have to go before them, they have to be approved. As a member, I would approve, so. Anybody else on the police? All right, Public Works. All right, Kristen, sure, true. All right, we got you all this new equipment here recently, so we're having a problem with getting personnel, so all this other equipment. Are we gonna have anybody, if we have time between the new equipment, we'll go right to the ball, and this, to really utilize it?
Right, yes. You know, as far as mowing deck, that will be replacing a overmodel and, uh, with the crack chaser.
And what's the crack chaser, so Craig, are you filling a little?
Yeah, no, um, ideally, um, most of your crack seal product has an ideal crack running every quarter and then it's done that and it's fine. A lot of them are just not ideal, some of them you have to route out, make the crack seal more effective.
And what are the drainage cover headwinds, where would, where do those go?
Roaring springs, right. A bunch of them are just, they're, uh, they're basically like, they're just on the bar.
Since those are in our rideaway, those are responsible for maintenance on those?
Those, no, that's tapped into the drainage, uh, grant stuff, not the drainage project or bond.
How many uses for the pit wall?
It would be, yes, yeah.
Anybody else have a question for Public Works?
How much savings are we looking at switching to natural gas and propane?
We got some tanks there that just come fill out. Now, is any of the, are trucks or anything use that, or is it strictly for heating and stuff in the middle?
Strictly for heating and crap. Or, or.
And that, what is that for, is that for changing the mechanisms in all of the units to go from propane to natural, or is this by?
No, that's like a jet line. That's actually running the line, but it's breaking through the top.
But then you'd have to pay to get all the equipment converted, all the heating units.
Yeah, we have all of the worst, the worst of this.
Okay.
A fun role to do that pretty.
Josh, you have ninety, how much we spend annually on propane for that? It's not a lot, uh, but, uh, in terms of natural gas, you know, proficiency of the propane, it's always, it's usually less. Uh, but this is just a way of saving, we spend a little money to save in the long run. But no, I don't, I don't have enough in front of me.
Anybody else have any questions on Public Works?
Now, this is the facilities over here.
Right.
And when we're looking long-term, is that gonna maintain long-term facilities, or we're looking at possibly taking a change?
Well, because, because we don't know what TechStop's going to do, we're just, we've been kind of, kind of keep our power drawing any type of projects. Uh, you know, we, we had anticipated the alternative, preferred alternative to kind of just south of Fourteenth Street here. Uh, as we all look at that, that alternative over the last couple of years. Well, now we're looking at it coming right down to Twelfth Street and just wiping out. All, all of this, uh, which is where, uh, gathering data, trying to be definitely happen. So, until we know what TechStop's going to be, we haven't really made, uh, we've talked about it, moving Public Works with the cost that's gonna be involved. Uh, to do that is kind of scared us off, you know, uh.
Now, there are these buildings they're not paid for.
Yeah, they, I definitely would pay as much as we're gonna need to pay for it, dealing with this stuff. So, yeah, we have talked about it in kind of generally, uh, kind of strategic way, but never, but, and the paper, the cost, yeah.
Still too close to the downtown area.
Right.
And with that being too much in the year, that's probably an easy item, which is kind of at this point, you know, I'd love to put the upgrades into it right now. But not knowing what the long-term of that building's gonna be. Yeah, not thirty-seven bucks, I would.
Anybody else have anything on Public Works? Animal control, if you could support, do that, chief. Tell me what a cat cage replacement is for fifteen thousand dollars.
Cat cages that they have in there right now, one eighteen days, counts gas. Uh, they are a open bar, uh, open front bar page. And what we're asking is to replace those with new pages that are on a sealed front with, with, spreading these, and that sort of thing.
How many cats do we typically have or anything on that?
Thank you, go for it.
Yeah. Is that, is the reason for that, and there a procedure to go through, or we just keep them forever, or?
No, it's a, they do not euthanize animal on our regular basis, they, they keep them in there as long as they've got space. So, generally, what we had to pass before, if you're.
Aren't there some other shelters over that will take, I don't know about cats, but I know with dogs, you can sometimes offload them to another shelter. That specializes in that kind of thing, where we're not, or they looked into that?
Yeah, well, I think animal control is pretty hard, everybody, the fire, fresh organizations, different, different places, move animals out, out there, it's still.
And when we look at the utilization, now, there's actually a good amount, it's, it's also true that they do move, move animals quite a bit. I mean, I'd like to see a little bit more proactive online presence, they, they go through spouse. You know, we'll have some of this, those, you know, social media and hack some stuff out and it goes for months, but not much activity, but.
And chief, this isn't, this isn't just the point one case, Mike.
No, it's the entire whole, this is the whole, yeah, the whole, this whole area, yeah, yes. I think, you know, you think of the total thirty-seven thousand for animal control, that's probably, that's one of our apartments that has been a step top for many years. And since then, they're getting to that point that, it's such a small facility, uh, it's, it's, they've got it pretty cramped in.
What type of floor they looking to change in there?
They're, they're really looking to just replace the places there, they have an epoxy floor. When, once you get past the, that's very, everything go back to epoxy floor, it allows them to, uh, bring home the sale and wash and clean.
I just think that replaces a lot of the.
It's, it's just starting to peel, same, same kind of thing, the door dams against the walls, that kind of thing, it's starting to peel up and it, and that's. Where you get those, those gaps, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah, because that's original, right?
Yes, that's.
Anybody else, anybody else have anything on animal control? Is that a requirement, that the epoxy, uh, sealed floor?
I don't know if it's a requirement, I know it's a, a, something that makes cleaning much easier for them.
Disease and stuff like this. Is it better than just kind of straight concrete?
I mean, it's kind of reasonable whether it's not, but, yeah, that's not an option. You can't seal the concrete.
I had a question on animal control.
Our way.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, for the last couple of years, you've been asking for a new sign out there. And, uh, I haven't had any, anything on that.
We have replaced, or we, we've upgraded the signs that we got there, we did not put a monument sign, a lighted monument sign. Those were, I, I don't remember the exact cost, but it was very expensive to give out. Uh, we did put a sign on, on your side of the building, uh, that I, I think better averaged, no occasion.
I think that, that was the main thing for the longest time, if, if people couldn't see what it was and didn't know where to find it and things. And we just, that was the main reason for getting a sign. So, if, if, you know, at one point, we had, we had, I thought we had budgeted for it, but, uh, uh, I think it came in too late to, to make it to the budget and then we just didn't add it the next year. But I think, uh, that's one of the things that I'd like to see the animal control go forward with is, you know, getting that sign out there where people knows where to at.
Mike, we talk, um, I want to say, didn't we work on this earlier this fiscal year of getting that sign put up? We did. We talked about the monument sign, but I can't remember where we fell on it.
The monument sign, the numbers came in significantly higher than we thought. And so, we, we put the two signs on the building that are there now, which, and I think there are such, they could be moved on to a monument sign when we get there. But the main reason, um, that I've quit chasing the monument sign is because, again, it boils down to TechStop. If they come through there with that road, part of that rideway is gonna take out that east side.
Yeah, that's true.
And so, because it was so much money, um, the, the numbers we were getting, we just have stayed with signs on the building until TechStop makes up their mind what they're gonna do, so we don't just have to build it in the territory.
Mike, do you remember offhand what the estimate was on that, just a round number?
The numbers were coming in, coming in between twelve and eighteen thousand dollars. And that's for concrete footing, block, latted. Um, I mean, it would, it would be a nice, and it would be the same brick that matches the building, we, we still have quite a bit of that brick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else on animal control? Our department? Yeah. All right, go ahead, Joe. I'll just ask about landscaping, I mean, we've, I've been building for ten years, it's really never been landscaped, I don't know, do we have irrigation there now?
Uh, no, sir, that's, that's one of the laws.
No, I, I see it, that's what I was just questioning, if, you know, putting that in here, I didn't know whether we got irrigation from the beginning or, we've never had irrigation.
And I was understanding that the building was landscaped very nicely, because there wasn't any irrigation, essentially everything died. And then they replaced everything, gravel in some spots. Uh, so, it was asked of me to submit this on behalf of one of our volunteer firefighters, who's actually done quite a bit on his own, using his own money, they'll try to dress things up. And, uh, we submitted this, um, this would put in the landscaping, I'm sorry, the irrigation system. Uh, and then plant the plants so that they'll be taken care of.
Yeah, I think typically within the city, we haven't had very good luck with any plants anywhere, I agree, I don't think we've got this. We have any plants that have, like, you know, I think we did with Lord. What is, they have, yeah, that's, I was studying it now, so. I would probably want to think pretty hard about that, you know, like I said, we just don't have luck with our weather and everything, I think, just as low maintenance as we can get, we're probably better off. Uh, on the desktop CPU replacements, that's not in our CIP budget, I thought we headed to where we were.
Well, now, they're, they're way below the threshold, and, you know, significantly below the threshold now, so you'll typically see that, uh, in each departmental budget. We had two lots, one's capital, that weighs over five thousand and ten hundred, and that's per purchase. So, our computers are gonna be, our new computer, they're gonna be about a hundred bucks. That's gonna be, this is gonna be in the departmental, departmental budget, everyone at the CIP.
Realize anything we were burning?
Yeah, uh, are any designers able to be reimbursed through the ESD?
I can ask. I just like, I know, so you can go there, go there.
We talked about AEDs before, and that was one of the items, they said this, it is a reimbursable item. Uh, the, the, uh, SEPA box, that should be something, equipment-wise, that, that should be reimbursable from. I don't know, maybe even the, the scheduling calendar, you know, maybe they've got a, got a software that we could tap into for less cost. I'm not aware of anything that they have right now. The only system they have that we use, it's really not their system, so the active time, where it's just basically, kind of replace the old page system. Uh, there's no scheduling system that you can get. Now, as far as the other items, I'll be glad to check, but I know their contract doesn't, there's any reimbursement for these sorts of things.
Now, a couple of things, the AEDs and, and, you know, their files, both of those are, are pretty highly, we, we've seen in the past chrome grants. Even places such as Powerhouse Subs, that's straight in their wheelhouse, dollar-wise. And, you know, like our type of need, you know, able to get those kind of grant, for that, so those may be some of the easy ones to chase. It's not a lot of money, you know, the grant scheme things, but on our part, we're looking at pay three thousand here, two thousand that department, eight thousand that department, all added. You know, we've got, we're really, you know, face value chasing half a million dollars. That starts that, so I'd encourage you to kind of look at those, over these next couple of weeks, those, those options to be able to, you know, they, yeah, are, are nice ESD because they're so helpful to us, I think they're probably just gonna jump on board and do all they can via system. And then, uh, obviously some of those other avenues for, for grants.
Yeah, I'd be glad to look into that, uh, I wouldn't want to see these things supplanted, whether you get the grant. Waiting for that because these are critical items, you have street, uh, gas pumps or that sort of thing. Uh, those are things we really need to have, and they're expired, so you can't use the old brand. So, I would just counsel, consider this.
Because I think we've been doing AEDs, I think, at least one time every year for.
Several years, yeah.
And a lot of times, like I said, I think, ESD, there's been some avenues where we've had, actually, currently, some of the places that have done some assistance with that.
Yeah, I'll make a phone call with ESD tomorrow, find out right away, again, such things. As far as the grants, uh, I can call around and see if there's anything available, even at that, there's no guarantee.
Sure.
But, uh, again, these things are definitely critical to us, whether we get the grant or not, so I would just counsel, consider it.
When we get back from Burris and Nick, we should.
There's a lot of packs, yeah, we had two of those.
What's the window shakes for, is that for the conference room?
Well, it's, well, yeah, primarily, most of it's for the, for the training room. And then the way the station door is, it's not assessed, and, uh, basically wipes out the displays on the TV displays. The white one, that's much white, or TV displays, it gets very hot in there. Uh, and then the other ones, uh, lines before the workout room, but it's also on the same wall, the sun streams in there.
Those would probably pay back pretty quick, I think, with just utility costs, that we're probably losing. Trying to keep the place cool with all that sun, because the sun definitely comes into those two rooms, a little bit. Anybody else have anything else on our department? Bart, you're a little bit, chief, you're a bit, what's the, there's been so much say for, have we heard of anything?
No, sir, uh, you won't hear anything until they say you got it or you did it.
Who was that normally, but there's no way, no, it's, if no news is good news, you, you get.
Remember last year, we were.
Right, right. And then they kept going through several months.
Well, we, we had gotten far as we had gotten before here and we didn't get it. I mean, we heard we didn't get it in October, so last year, I think it was, it was something, we heard a lot, we heard that we had.
Anybody else on our department? All right, Parks Department?
I just, I just, I, you know, I put that little dozen there, my top EDC, those are gonna be a lot of items in the MNO fund. Uh, I just wanted to give you guys an idea, because you will see that in the overall budget. But that, that's really just for your information and then I'll be, I'll be asking for top E to consider those things, so. And I, you know, again, um, this was not, anyway, I just kind of want to hear from you guys, what y'all thought about some of your requests. And certainly the CIP, because those are the kind of big money items when it comes to, uh, uh, equipment. And if you're in, in, you know, just the, you know, what kind of focus you guys want me to have, because, you know, what we've been doing is that CIP is funding, uh, a big chunk of that reserves, uh, in the last few years, but obviously, uh, have a balanced budget by default. At the la- at least every year since I've been. But obviously uh, have a balanced budget by default of the, like, at least every year since I've been here, we use reserves to balance the budget. So uh, you know, if, if you guys have any specific areas when it comes to what these, any departments or areas of these, these pieces of equipment may, uh, work, the department they may be specifically for, and they're obviously have worked, they may be conducting. And just overall, the general kind of, you know, philosophy of how we're going to, how we're going to, how we want to be there to focus on budgeting this year. Uh, but there's so many unknowns uh, before we get our rates in. Uh, I really don't know what to start, honestly. This is the birth of my career. I've had so many things thrown at me all in one year. They have to try to, try to manage, so.
The public works equipment storage, under five thousand dollars. Are we looking at building a new storage facility? I thought we just.
That's additional coverage, right, Kristen?
Forty, but okay, so what the thing that we built last year or whatever, fifty thousand dollar metal building is, no longer at with what we got, or?
Uh, correct.
Well, we, we have other equipment that's.
Because we bought new equipment, right? And even on this list, there's more equipment to be added that. I guess I come back to Krista though with, you know, here's more equipment plus what was on the other. Are we going to be able to utilize all of that equipment?
But I've still got it on.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we do what we can do and, and all of that equipment is utilized.
Just out of curiosity, is there any of those things that could like be ready for a year to, to use them and save some money and then pick it up in another year?
I've considered the option, but the cost of rental is fine. And, and brush cutters, they don't matter. Those are beta.
Yeah.
Straight up, okay. You never know where they're at.
And I guess the police, we've got two vehicles this year, so this is part of the regular deal where we're trying to get two vehicles.
Yeah, and I've said we include the entire C I P in here just for what's coming up next year, but we remember, kind of try to remember back. It's basically two a year. I think there's one year, there's one in the third year from this year and then the, third year, again, there's like one, so you have like two, two, one, two, two, one. It's, so it's basically two a year is, is in, in the rotation, how we have them. Like Rob was saying, how we try to stagger them out and getting them on a regular uh, rotation where we're not, you know, ten years behind on some of the vehicles.
And chief, on the EMS response here, which one is that replaced?
That's replacing the old sport, Wayne's old cart. It's got a little shot thing down.
It's the Expedition.
Uh, maybe it's, I'm sorry.
I think it's larger than the Explorer.
I know, it's, it's, but it's an old model, but it's ten years old.
We got, well, we got that renewed, so I'm going to hang one, a new vehicle will be a whole new one.
Which did, you know, started to jump back and forth, but we mentioned parks, head on here, used truck for fifty-two hundred bucks. Where would we price the used truck for fifty-two hundred dollars?
Auction. We have a way, my concern is, while they're, I can't, but we have been having really good luck on a, you know, relatively underused and they're, they're not, I mean, it's not something you want to run downtown, but given what we need it for, they said I probably need to swap off. That's just other, never ever, we can use to carry people or play that.
Yeah, so we're looking at maybe later in the year. Right now, I mean, I can just tell you, used car auction prices, I mean, I'm, I'm getting five thousand dollars for trucks that don't run. So, I mean, it's, it's really ugly right now. One, you know, sell, pull something.
Has anybody else had any questions on these capital equipment items?
Well, I'm, I'm going back to the storage building. Again, because we still don't know what text dots want to do, where this building has been constructed where we're at now.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't want to construct anything there until we know what text dots going to do.
Yeah, I can see that a lot of our, the other, the other side of it is the reason we would put it up to begin with, just because of the equipment. So, you know, hanging, and you have to keep in mind, you're looking at, uh, if we're able to hit text dot, uh, once I'm able to get the data, their, their request from me, which I'm trying to get them downtown, hopefully, you understand, to send to them. Uh, we're like, we're looking at a, a public meeting or open house, like we had in fact, you know, probably it was November. And then they'll finalize it maybe mid twenty twenty one. So we're looking at another entire year, probably even start construction. Uh, maybe two years start construction, uh, I mean, I mean, conservative estimate. So in the meantime, you know, we, that's, you know, you've got this, you've got this, equipment that you have out there, uh, you know, in the elements, which is why we.
I know, this, this isn't going to be fully enclosed. This is just like three wall type.
Mildred.
Yeah.
And so those big booms, if you ever needed to. It's a concrete wooden, but don't they just post it bolted to them?
Yes, yes. This, I, I would have to check into that, but I would.
It's probably not worth the cost.
Yeah, yeah, because there's a lot of important light, but with the concrete, like, like the main, the concrete, that's the cost. That's the most expensive part.
Oh, they don't shoot to do.
You're making a good point. I mean, this is a lot, a lot that we have to do in years. We don't know if it's going to happen. We have to make judgment calls on either making expenditure or not making them based on, you know, what ifs. And uh, this is another thing to make the other year, but right now, it just, frankly, I, I see where you're going. There's so many what ifs already.
Yeah.
Uh, there already were and that will change that in the last several months. Uh, I can, I can see where the point is. And so it's just kind of a catch 22 in a lot of ways. I mean, even, even the stuff, even the stuff that we do here at City Hall or with the P D, I mean, you can make the same argument, we don't know if text dot's going to come around for here. So do we make the investment in improving the facilities or do we wait? In the meantime, we have needs and it's just a.
It is, it is, but I guess that's the type of stuff I would assume if for some reason catastrophic aspects came, so they work on this way, then, we can, we would have the numbers and the leverage to be able to negotiate that aspect as well. So like, we just made a hundred and five thousand dollars capital improvement as well.
Yeah, we would certainly get, yeah, most of all, it back, yeah.
Is there a way by prioritizing equipment that you have on the C I P?
Yeah, so I don't want to speak for Kristen. We, we, that's a practice, a process you go through. Even their initial funding request, I did not bring that to y'all's attention, uh, because I didn't want to uh, kind of poison the well of the discussion of what I, I ask them every year. Okay, you sent me this list of, of requests, always I'll appoint you now because they're all unfit. And I do the exact same thing. I'm sitting down, just looking at what our reserve fund balance is going to be, how much it's going to cost, and some of this stuff, and what they need more to do together. So we do this on everything.
That prioritization would be that you submit your decision process on what you submit to the budget.
Right, okay.
Well, given what you're looking forward to.
I think I've heard a little bit, uh, what I was looking for, so I, I can kind of glean from comments, but.
If you don't like the suggestion from council, that everybody take this information, look at this list, send Joshua input. If there's something, you know, you had a question about, concern about, you know, you definitely want to have this happen, or you don't want this to happen, or whatever, just send Josh that.
Yeah, that'd be great, actually, I'm saying, yeah.
And the stuff like chief said, mandatory, because we have to do, you can somehow ask for that, because that's kind of, still we're public, that we have to do.
Yeah, I don't know, because we have to do them, but there are some things that we, so hopefully just have to have, they have to be replaced, and that we talked about.
Yeah.
It's always not a true mandate, but they're old and we got to get rid of them. We have to replace it.
Certainly the issue.
Well, and that's always kind of like catch 22 of this too, is that a lot of what we do here is with replacement, we have so much of what we have, is not as last used in life, year of life. I mean, it's really just a replacement, but technically it's new spending. We have, we have, actually, it's new funding, but we haven't had it in the budget for several years, so.
Well, that may sound like every time that chief goes out this unit, you know, this fourteen year old expedition, whatever, I mean, what are the rest of that involved as well? Sorry, I didn't understand.
Oh, and let me just say that on the rest of the S U B A models, those are rescue packs, models, they, they, they really need to be replaced, maybe it's a matter of, you know.
Well, that, the gas bomb.
To mitigate a rescue situation from your down fire. Well, that, that, the gas bombs, I mean, those are two, two things that you guys have to have to be what you do. That's, to me, those are, you know, yes, put them in the budget.
They're no brainers.
No, 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 no.
That's what I'm saying. We've got no brainer items that.
I would, I would surprise to take those out since they're no brainers.
I would say these are items that I would consider should be in the regular budget. Itemized that, you know, maintenance, or whatever it is, because that's, you know, if that's how, how important that is, and that's where that's going to go.
Yeah.
There's somewhere else in that departmental budget we have to look at, we have to look. But that's one of the things that chief says, it's a, hey, this is a non-question thing, got to have it, great. Right now, we're looking at this picture, as we start to look at this picture, narrow it down, you said, well, that department needs to find an eighteen thousand dollar, you know. Where are they going to find it? Well, you started, this is going to happen. Where is he going to find the other?
Yeah.
You might have got anything else on that? Mike, anything?
No, sir.
Kid?
No.
Okay, uh, and now we'll go to the budget tax rate adoption calendar.
Yes, hopefully, I said this a little bit earlier, so hopefully you all had a chance. Uh, I'll, I'll have a chance to look at this. Again, the, the, the regulations have changed so much. It took, it took me uh, about a week of reading through them. I answered help them to my colleagues in the area to really know what applies to us and what doesn't. And ironically, when it's also been done, it probably changes for us. Uh, well, again, it all comes down to the minimum rate for us, automatic versus petition elections and everything else. So what I've always tried to do is try to be uh, uh, very cognizant of your time, which a little bit of your time, so all, when it comes to this time of year, uh, everything's kind of crunched down to about forty-five day period. There's some of you who have been around for all of you at this point, have to know this. Um, but I've always tried to make sure public hearings and workshops, and that's what they are always in regular meeting nights, try to be tripled time. Uh, and as this calendar, hopefully you've had a chance to look at this. Uh, the only special call meeting we'll have is September third. That's the only one on here that's not a regular meeting. Uh, but the, the one, the one good thing uh, that the legislature did do for us is uh, just having one public hearing instead of two this year. And one, technically one notice, they're, they're actually free notice as we have to do, but in terms of what has to be, you have to go in the paper for a certain number of days before the public hearing. We have to do one of those now. Now, they made it as hard as possible to try to determine what notice you use, because there's about five that we not have to use. It's kind of if, then, then this. And there's about five different versions of that. So again, until we know what our rate should be, and what notice to use, that's really not an effective calendar at all. So uh, if you had, uh, so that's all I wanted to show you. Uh, make sure, and on that September third thing, uh, Terry brought up a good point, our forums are bars for us, no matter why I'm going to put that note in there. Uh, uh, so uh, just make sure that if you have any, uh, any uh, issues when it comes to the quorum and these meetings, as soon as possible. I'll also say, when it comes to uh, something that's changed this year, when it comes to the adoption of the tax rate, okay? So we do this in September, our regular monthly meeting, we adopt the budget, right, and adopt the tax rate. This year, what we have to do is actually adopt the M and O and I N S rate separately, okay, by voice vote. Not just the overall total vote of tax rate anymore. We have to set, we have to vote, adopt those separately. And if we, if the council adopts, I think we're all ready to exceed the no new rev, or the voter approval rate has to be sixty percent. Terry, Terry can, uh, I think correct me on that, on that, with that would be five out of seven. So there's one thing we have a forum, there's another that if we adopt the rate over that, uh, Terry, is it the voter approval rate or the no new revenue rate that requires sixty percent vote?
Anything above the no new revenue rate.
Okay, right, so uh, that would require five out of seven to vote for that tax rate. And typically, we don't have that issue. We've gone through the workshops and we've kind of fleshed it out in the meantime. But because I don't know what the race, I don't know how the home state exemption is going to affect, uh, hopefully it pays it positively, but I don't, I haven't got a straight answer on that yet. Uh, what I anticipate is us, our current rate being above the no new revenue rate, okay? But below the divinity rate. So the way to look at this is that eight percent number that we would always try to stay up there, that's what I'm still going to try to do. Uh, what that, with the differences this year, in the past, you went above eight percent, you risk a rollback election, a petition. Now, and I've been worried about cities o- other than thirty thousand, almost thirty thousand, because if you adopt one uh, rate over three now, you have an automatic election for large cities. But for us, we're still in that petition standpoint. So we adopt a rate over three now percent, we risk a petition election, uh, but that's no different than any other year. Uh, so I suspect we will exceed the no new revenue rate. The question will be is, is the no new revenue rate higher than the rollback? Or the voter approval rate or vice versa, and how the divinity rate fits into all that. So uh, we, we, I can't really know. I will all up and looking, I'm deep though, we won't be having our, our, our match, so.
And this is all, we could be keeping the same tax rate.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're not talking about raising the tax rate.
No.
Now, one thing, obviously, we just got to make sure we just really really monitor watches, is notices, you know, in the paper, is obviously the paper schedule now is just getting worse more, some a daily basis.
Yeah, well, I also, as a matter of fact, I hadn't reviewed this twice because the, the, we were at times like, uh, oh, this is Tuesday, Thursday, and that's for now. Right, so I had to go back and review this in, in, in light of those, basically, we had to do some things a little bit earlier than we technically have to, but as long as it's before a certain date, we'll be fine.
I want to thank you for giving me a sound as early as you can.
Any questions on the calendar? All right, I want to get to the next work session. First items, review, discuss any questions related to the budget report, financial stake for June twenty twenty. As Josh mentioned, there were several uh, transfers that did make some of them, look, look it out of fact, that this was set out the memo explaining most of those. Does anybody have any questions on the financial reports?
No.
Next is review and discuss information related to drainage issues affecting specific commercial businesses, six oh nine, there's six thirteen North Broadway. Out of the people that are, oh, and I don't know, can tell everybody's name, do we have anybody that's associated with those properties out? Okay, I don't see any hands or anybody saying, okay, I was just wanting to make sure if you were included in the discussion, if you were. Uh, Mike, I believe you've been sort of spearheading what we've done since the last meeting, if you could maybe give us a recap.
Mike, you got? Yes, sir. Um, we have reached out to text dot and they were, um, and actually asked them about some, some maintenance along the bar ditches, along one seventy-four. They already had that contract bid and it was actually getting ready to start. So I asked them if, uh, made sure that was going to include Joshua and, and it, it goes all the way from Bertelson down to Cleveland. And we've asked them to include evaluation of the culverts that, that go underneath highway one seventy-four. Specifically, the one that catches the drainage uh, coming from these properties. Uh, they have agreed to do that. They're going to have the engineer check the flows, make sure that those are still of adequate size and to make sure that they're cleaned out. We noticed in one of the last floodings over there, partially, um, th- that water backs up as it comes down and hits one seventy-four. And so we were going to check to make sure that there were no clogs downstream from that before it goes underneath one seventy-four. We've also visited with Bertelson to see, there's a drainage channel that runs uh, towards ma, uh, towards Village Creek from one seventy-four. Um, that empties out onto Mountain Valley Boulevard. We've, uh, Kristen visited with Bertelson about cleaning that out. If it's theirs to clean out, they've indicated they would, but it's possible that that's a text dot easement through there. I've not heard back from either of the entities, but I've also been gone the past couple of weeks too, so uh, that, that may be resolved. Uh, they are working on the roads. That contract is ongoing. Um, I've also reached out and visited with uh, State Representative Burns. Uh, he has indicated that he, uh, he will be happy to attend uh, any meetings that we put together to discuss this. And if he needs to uh, help intervene or run some interference with text dot and T C E Q, he'd be happy to do that. I also visited with the uh, new rep from T C E Q here, who again reiterated that they saw no, uh, they did not see any uh, reason that would compel them to get invited. they did not see any reason that would compel them to get involved in anything civil. That was reaffirmed by the regional water manager from Lubbock. But they also said that those decisions typically are not made locally. That would be an Austin decision. And when I conveyed that to Dwayne Burns, he indicated again that he'd be happy to make those phone calls if we needed him to. So far, you know, everybody we've reached out to has, has been willing to take a look at it. Once we receive the information from text dot about those, those couple of culverts that we're looking for, we believe some might be uncovered. They're gonna check that as well. That'll kind of give us a better idea of where we are. And then I would expect that once we do schedule a meeting, it'll, it'll be something on Zoom, kind of like what these are. I don't know that we could get everybody in one room that would include the property owner, so. Right now, we're watching to see what text dot does and get that report, and then we'll schedule something with, with everybody and we'll go from there.
What was text dot's timeframe that they thought they would have worked on in Joshua?
They believe the, the contract date is for thirteen days. They started that last week. And I, I haven't been down that stretch of one seventy-four in the last couple of days. I do know they've started. I've seen them out there. I don't know how far south they've come yet.
All right, we'll keep this appraised and present, let's know. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Next item, review and discuss terms of the city board, council members and conditions. Basically, what Alice has done, she's gone back since the beginning of the time to go through all the documents that we had to determine on our boards. Part of it, we changed our zoning requirements. There was a condition in there that our boards had to be two-year terms. That only elected officials can be three-year terms. If you're appointed to a board, you can only serve for two years. We had asked to get three years in there. So what happened, that's to make some changes. One of the other changes was that you could only serve four terms or eight years on our boards. Appreciate what Alice did. We're in better shape than I thought we were. We didn't have that many people that had served over eight years. I was a little bit concerned about the leadership of those boards, because a couple of those members that have been around forever happen to be the chairman. Well, likely, in just about every case, the chairman's term doesn't expire until twenty twenty-one. So I think that gives us some room to, this year, maybe bring in some new chair people, let the old chairperson help us out in transition. But like I said, I think we sort of went through on the PMZ board, really, the only person there is Merle as the alternate. But his term doesn't expire till ten twenty-two. I would suggest that we let all the terms expire naturally. I don't think we need to go in there and kick anybody off right now if they're in the middle of the term. I think, Terry, would that be all right, since we just changed this rule?
Yes, everybody completes their term.
Okay. All right. On the zoning board of adjustments, we do have a couple there that are hitting limits. Scott Hendricks is the chairperson, I believe, and he's been there fourteen years. Likely, his term doesn't expire till twenty twenty-one. We do have Larry Taylor that's been on for eight years. His term expires twenty twenty. So we'll be having to talk with Larry. Type A, we've got two. Linda Childers has been on for eight years. Her term expires in twenty twenty. The chairman is Darren Beck. He's been there for nine years, but his term doesn't expire till twenty twenty-one.
Now, so what, these, I'm not mistaken, these look like A and B don't have them.
That's correct.
Okay.
They have their own bylaws.
Correct.
All right, well, good. That's fair more issues.
Yeah.
All right. So then really, on type B, didn't have any issues there. You have Merle been on for ten years. We're in good shape there. Heritage preservation. We do have a couple of, that one, Mike Bucket, July Hollisworth, who's our representative on that? Rick, the priest, does anybody know, have we been having meetings on heritage? Has everyone been coming? I don't even know when the last meeting.
We haven't had one since I've been here.
So late, late last, early last fall, or we have some of those last thirty minutes.
So we may have.
We had, I know we had two or three last, last calendar year.
But it didn't have, again, the number of those. So the only ones that are the things, owning.
Really? All right.
We didn't show you. You were doing something on the library.
I did. I cannot find any documents here that shows how the members are appointed. So what I have here, I got from the librarian and the mayor helped me out with it.
And like I said, and you need to check for Burna, because again, Burna is one that's the city and school, which we voted on that joint. Basically, the way it works is the school board appoints three, the city appoints three. We have one that the school board and city appoint, and then the representative from the school board, which is the superintendent, and the representative from the council, which is typically the mayor. So I think moving forward, we're okay. Appreciate Alice's plan, although this is a little tricky time to see me. With all those numbers together. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Alice. Does anybody have any questions regarding any regular session agenda?
No.
Next, public forum. The city council doesn't invite citizens to speak on any topic. However, unless items specifically noted on the agenda, the city council is required in the Texas Civil Meetings Act. Limits response to a statement of fact, reciting city's policy or directing that person. We are on Zoom meetings, but we do give the option. It's on the agenda on the city's website. If you do have a question, how to submit that question. Next is the consent agenda. Just mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna separate these items. All right? And I don't think, we don't have to take a vote. If somebody says they want to separate it, we just do it, right? And vote each other individually. Terry, do you have any comment on that?
If, I'm sorry, did, did someone want to take an item off?
Yeah, no, but Scott had requested that we do each the consent agenda out separately. We don't have to have a vote to do that, do we?
Yeah, we do. We can have a vote to just say, to conserve each, to consider each item individually.
Okay. Then I'll need you to.
I'm moving, I'm moving that we separate these items.
All right, have a second? I'll say it. The motion by Scott, the second by Robert Purtle, to remove all the items from the consent agenda. I assume you will remove all of them?
I don't want to remove them. I want to separate them. I want to discuss each one, one by one.
Basically, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mike, six oh. All right. First item is consider approval of the minutes for the city council meeting held on June eighteenth, twenty twenty.
I'm like, you must, will you approve?
I'll second.
They got a motion by Jerry Moore singing about Scott Kimble. Discussion, all those in favor? Hove? No, no. Six oh. Next, consider approval of a resolution from the city of Joshua, Texas, designating Scott Porter as an employee to calculate the new, no new revenue tax rate increase in accordance with the Texas tax code.
Is this something that is required to be, and is required than the Scott Court?
It's not required by the Scott Court. It's the taxes sets across the state, certainly the city of Joshua. The city of, Texas centers routinely and generally are the ones that calculate the rates for cities. They get your data, they have the software, they plug all the numbers, and it's the software. That's who we, that's who we always get our rates from. So this is actually not awarded correctly. We're not, we're not literally designated as an employee. We just have to have a designated need or an alter, and calculating the rates. The tax assets are also.
He also extends every year, right?
No, he also, this is a new requirement for us this year. And they also have to post the rates. They on their own website. So Eric, a lot of it has to do with our rates. The tax system's responsibility anyway. And so you could have designated me, and I'm just gonna turn on your direct spot. But I would typically respond with the calculation. But that, that calculation went many pages, about fourteen pages, and I had a software to do it, so.
Well, we've never done this before, so I wanted to discuss it before.
Remember, just keep in mind the consent agenda. Joe Ashley got this too, quickly, and Alice and I are getting the, the, Alice together consent agenda. The way that we, you can send agendas kind of team stuff, if you're gonna have to do it anyway, like in this case, or something we've done before, routinely do at the minutes, or, you know, we have a new school, we've already done one here, that sort of thing. So this isn't a, you know, doing it is one called smooth, but this is kind of what we would consider a team, so. That's why, that's why this is up in there together.
Because you're really good at counting, they got thirty or forty of their consent agenda.
Yeah, but this isn't a requirement for us this year.
Okay. So I, I, we had to see the course. I was wanting to question it. Generally, consent agenda is this go and go. That's part of the problem with counties. They put things on the consent agenda that should be being discussed. And so, thank you very much. And I'm not mistaken, just for further reference, if we come up to consent agenda, at any time before we vote on consent agenda, we can have questions or discussion about any of the other things in the consent agenda, right?
Yeah. It's like, it's like, it's like, it's like any, any, the consent agenda itself is like any specific guy, any one item. So you can talk about everything, and they have a motion to pass.
Without your life, just breaking it down with the.
Yeah, Alice has learned all the time on that. We had staff report about this, but she came up with super, super, super better.
All right, I'll take a motion on the resolution designated Scott Porter. Got a motion by Jerry Moore singing by Angela Nichols. Discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries six oh. Next, just consider the approval of the memorandum of understanding for the city of Joshua with JISD, athletic services. I talked to Josh about this, the clinical contract we put last year. It's just got to be in the dates.
Do we have any issues with the contract from last year?
No, I agree. I have not that much integrity before, because I'm aware, I was wondering, right, you know, about.
Have they done any citation at all?
That's right. Not, not really, but the city of Joshua, although that would be. They have schools that are outside, or.
I'm going, we approve. Got a motion by Scott Kimble singing by Robert Purtle to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Joshua and Joshua Ashley Police Force. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six oh. Last is consider approval of the interlocal agreement, the water utilities facilities relocation rates from Johnson County Special Utility District, city of Joshua, relative to Cooper Valley. This is something we've had to do for Wildwood, for Sandlin. I think this is what's also on the agenda regular, to get it to where we don't have to do each one of them separately, you know, just be a part of the ordinance. So this is, but up until we pass that, this is specifically, we have to do each subdivision separately.
Is this the face five? Is this between where it's at now, the end of like Alexandria, going behind the stadium? Is that?
Yes, I think they're, I think the, this is exhibit. Yes, it's the very last page of that section. I think this, which is, I don't know how it lines up with the, with the existing, existing streets. We got a couple, couple of, couple of visuals from those last.
So is this actually go to, okay, stadium drive, so this is one where it will be tagged in the stadium drive?
This stadium, yes.
And what are they talking about? So they get ready to start this one?
No, we're still in the funding stages of this. I'd like to ask that, you know, the engineer, the question they have about an engineer comment, so.
Because we have to do some, well, we have to like, through stop signs and all that kind of stuff. We have to do traffic statistics. We'll need to do some studies or something for that, when that ties in the stadium drive.
That's part of the engineering. So this is extending this to Waterford Way.
We've already approved the preliminary plan.
Oh, yeah. Part of the, yeah, well, I think that.
I remember doing that.
Yeah, yes, that's, we're all working on the file right now. So, yes, Robert.
Mine had a yellow mark on the second page. Is there a reason for that?
Yes. You can disregard that. That was just for me to fill in the date that it was originally adopted.
Oh, from JSA. Yeah, what they want is this is their agreement, and we have to, yeah, we have to interact with them. Yeah, so just to highlight, y'all are interested in it.
Any other questions? Consider a motion to move, we approve the interlocal agreement. Got a motion by Scott Kimble singing by Angela Nichols to approve the interlocal agreement between JSA and the city of Joshua relative to Cooper Valley. Page five, the other discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries six oh. Now going to the regular agenda. I'm gonna open up a public hearing at seven fifty-six for a zoning change from agricultural district to R one, single-family residential district, going to one point five nine acre tract. Lance, generally located at the southwest corner of Conveyor Drive, in county road eight hundred A, locally known as five ten conveyor drive, Joshua, Texas. Staff presentation. Eric, you doing that?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, the property owners at five ten conveyor drive have, have filed a zoning change application of their property, wanting to rezone the two tracts of land from the agricultural district to the residential, single-family district. This property is two tracts of land, one being point five nine acres and the other a one acre tract. The one acre tract was gift-deded by the property owners to their daughter, which now the daughter would like to construct a residential, single-family home. The, in order for her to obtain a building permit to construct the home, she would have to plat the property. And before obtaining a plat, she would have to rezone or have the proper zoning in place. So with this rezoning, the, the request would comply with the federal or the future land use plan. And the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the rezoning request on July sixth and has made a recommendation to the city council for approval. I would also like to add that within two hundred feet of this property, there was twelve notices mailed out for the public hearing, and only one was opposed. At this time, the city staff would like to recommend approval.
Are the owners on line?
Yes.
Would you like to, okay, would you like to speak anything at this time?
No, we're just waiting for it to be approved. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. I guess we didn't get any in favor. We did get, you said one that was opposed.
Yes, sir, one.
Did they make any comments on the one that was opposed?
I believe the comment was that the property was not big enough, because there was already one home on it. But both tracts meet the area requirements of a single family, which the total square footage of a single-family lot is ten thousand square feet. A one acre tract is forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet. So both, both tracts of land are, 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 meet the area requirements.
All right. Thank you. We do give the owners a chance to rebut anybody that said anything. Would y'all like to say anything now, or you don't have to, whatever, it's up to you.
No, sir. No, we're fine.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing at eight o'clock. We'll put it now, discuss considering taking action on an ordinance admitting the official zoning map of the city of Joshua by changing the zoning of the property located at five ten conveyor in the city of Joshua, consisting of one point five nine acres of land described above. In the Cooper Valley, Cooper survey in the city of Joshua, Johnson County, from agriculture to single-family R one, fulfilling all conflict ordinances, providing a severability clause, providing penalty, providing for publications, providing for the payback. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Joe, how come the, the zoning wasn't set at R one L instead of R one?
Yeah, it doesn't meet the requirements. You have to have two acres, I believe, to be an R one L.
Yes.
Okay. That was my only question.
Anybody else have a question? My motion's approved.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Robert Purtle singing by Mike Kidd to approve. Any further discussion? Got a motion by Robert Pardon seconded by Mike Kidd to approve, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries six oh, now have your zoning changed. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next items, discuss, consider, take action on an ordinance to the city of Joshua, Texas, limiting subpart six, subsection A, generally of section ten point three point one easements containing the city's subdivision ordinance, exhibit A, article ten point oh two point zero zero one, subdivision ordinance of chapter ten subdivision regulation, that's the importance of the city of Joshua. Making findings, providing for severability, savings and rebuilding clauses, providing for penalties, providing an effective day, providing for publication of the captions here.
Joe, before you start, I just spoke about this specifically, and it doesn't have anything to do with the, the right of way issue, this is more important than that. Uh, so I'll let, I don't want to take parents' public here, but this doesn't really apply to what we talked about earlier in the bottom of the study. It does, but it's not, it doesn't keep us forever to do that, but this makes Jason kind of have to do each compliment. Right now, as we, we, Jason kind of controls things, uh, when it comes to development, but this does allow us, allows us as we're, uh, I, I'm getting ahead of myself, let Eric tell you, because he's the one, uh.
Oh, good. I was confused over that.
I was confused.
All right, Aaron, go ahead.
Yes, sir, mayor and council, this amendment of the subdivision or- ordinances is due to change in policy in regards to the easements and utility providers, which has impacted development in the city of Joshua. Currently, the city has no provision stating where we would like to have franchise utility easements. But with this amendment, we can require utility companies to locate within our right of way. Most cities have this, uh, same requirement, and it's also a standard engineering practice. Uh, this, this requirement would, would also accommodate the property owner to meet the, uh, city's landscaping requirements located in the front. So, at this time, the city would, uh, recommend approval of this, uh, amendment.
So this is, a bit more specifically, things are happening a lot of times, D V A, Hurricane, as I said in the, in the, in the step before the analysis here, return recent cases were this. They, because of our landscape requirements, they didn't have enough room to put in stuff they needed, because Jason would require our, in this additional easement. So basically, what they would do is they take a big chunk, there's already utilities, they may want them on separate easement, so they didn't have anywhere to treat. So they actually had to get a lease from text office, Hurricane, remember? Had to get a lease from text office, be able to put through trees in the red, text, text, our right of way. Had, had, we had this in place, they wouldn't have had to do that, because they would have had plenty of room to go ahead and put it on their own property. So, but this does, it does apply to, we just talked about earlier, what, what, this just makes us have the authority to make them do it. Right, so what we're doing with Cooper Valley, they stopped it, we just did with Joshua, that was more of a amicable, we're gonna do this together, but this does allow us by, by order to say, no, this is where you're gonna go. And you're gonna stop taking up people's front cars, basically, and going to make, we can say, what, what utility is going, what is, so they're telling us where we're gonna go.
Does this one have anything to do with what we're talking about, except, except on the drainage easements, how we're sort of designated drainage easements or not?
Not specific to drainage.
Okay, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think that, this one, this one, I'm gonna prefer it.
Anybody have any questions?
Jason's big reason for not wanting to be in the other franchise easements is mainly for, it's not for.
Communities.
It's, it's money. But they wanna go in, like I said, we've already got quite a bit of, a lot of like there, and now they want to go over somebody's front door, and it's just not.
So when, so like, so like, in certain, what is happening is we have this conflict with what our regulations say, probably yours have to do. And basically, Jason keeps them from doing what we are telling probably ours to do, their own separate policy. So, in essence, they're basically turning, either they're, instead of having to turn any of what the government happens. Is it about D V A to so long, we, ah, we're.
Now, basically, what we've done, though, is we've told them that they can put theirs in our right of way, and if we, if we want it moved, we'd have to pay to move it, but basically, so they're not really in the other utility, they're actually in our right of way.
Well, that, that's more specific to residential, right? But, but, yes, that's what that agreement early, guys are asking, that's what that's for.
And this is, very soon.
Well, yeah, we haven't been able to say, do they have a notice, no, because we haven't adopted the authority, open them to, put the site, sounds a little bit backwards. You think we already have an authority, but that's what this has.
Anybody else have a question? Mike, you okay out there, you got any questions?
No, I'm good.
All right, but I'll consider a motion. I'm moving, we accept the ordinance. I'll second. Got a motion by Scott Kimball seconded by Jerry Moore to adopt the ordinance, let me read it again, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Next, is to discuss, consider, take action on a waiver application filed by Sharon Kim regarding the high requirements of a privacy fence. Aaron?
Mayor and council, the, uh, property owners at three hundred Shelby Land have filed a waiver application regarding their, uh, privacy fence. The installed fence is eight feet, which exceeds the, um, allowed height of, height of six feet, as required by ordinance. Uh, the, uh, in this case, the fence or the property owners were unaware of our process and the ordinance, and so the fence was, uh, installed beforehand. Uh, the property owners were cited for an improper fence back in, uh, I believe it was January. The homeowner has pled guilty and has paid the fine and seeks your approval to, um, to, to keep her fence.
All right, I believe are those, all the property owners of its own, textbook, okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions or any discussion on this? Want to take a motion, man?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept it.
All right, now a second, I'll second. Got a motion by Mike Kidd seconded by Scott Kimball to approve the waiver application regarding the high requirements of the privacy fence. Any other discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries six zero, uh, you're in good shape now, thank you. Uh, next item is discuss, consider, take action for an agreement between the city of Joshua, Johnson County, for election services for the November third general election, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. Is, one question on this, but now, when they, when we do the early voting, we're still doing that like we always do, or do they have to go to the county to do early voting for your?
For early voting, it'd be at the sub courthouse.
Okay.
And then for election day, it'll be at five different places, and they will go whatever.
So this is one hundred percent the county's doing, the city will not be involved with the elections.
Well, the city, right, I will still do all the legal notices, um.
What is, for administering the election?
For the judges, and, that's right, the county will be appointing the judges and the, um, clerks.
Anybody have any questions?
And if it requires you to sign all the documents, sure, I'd love to hear that one.
Want to take a motion? My motion to approve. Sorry. Got a motion by Jerry Moore seconded by Robert Pardon to approve the agreement between the city of Joshua, Johnson County, for election services for November third general election, authorize the mayor to sign all this three documents. Any other discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Staff reports, anybody have any questions on the staff? Oh, and I have a question, I don't know, Mike, or Eric, or anybody. Uh, I noticed before you get to the event center of one seventy-four, there's some construction going on, there's like, in the mornings, there's about ten cars lined up, there's a property sale, they've got a couple of porta potties up at the front and back at the back, they've got a whole lot of tents, and there's quite a bit of construction going on. Does anybody know what that is?
I believe the code officer, uh, stopped and talked to them, it's Atmost doing some, 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 some type of gas work out there.
Okay, that's where the, there is a big gas lap, I think, is one of the, okay.
And when we're talking about code, if we, we're on the fourteenth street, the house that burned, we, that, it's gave that. Martin's thinking, we literally just talked about that today, so, just, Martin?
Yes.
The house on fourteenth street, the burned out, the burned out house, like?
Yeah, they, they've tried to make contact with her a couple of times, uh, over the last few days, weeks. She has not responded, so I directed them today to get a certified letter out to her, give them her thirty days to contact us. Uh, or, and if we don't hear from her, then we'll move to the next step to, uh, get that ready for Z B A. My understanding is that she's turned in engineering, and she's turned in plans for the new house, she has not received any permits, and from what we've been told, she is still in litigation with Encore. Um, but I mean, that could go on forever, and we are getting complaints, so we, we're gonna try to get her back to the table to see what's going on.
Y'all checking on the cars that are out front, too, that seem to have the expired information?
Yes, yes.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Angela's. Um, on Trailwood, there was some construction, I don't know if the people are ever going to have some recently, because as of right now, it's, I forgot the number, I pulled you on that else. It's on Trailwood, yes, um, it's a new construction, it's the only one there.
Uh, but you don't have to have. Aaron, can you hear her?
Uh, not, not entirely, uh.
And so are you, are you aware of the new residential construction around Trailwood?
Yes, sir, yes, yes.
Come into that?
Yes, yes.
But it didn't have brick?
No, no, there, no, uh, with the new, uh, change in law, the, uh, uh, brick requirement is no longer, uh, required. The mess, accessory, I'm sorry, is, is no longer required within our, uh, uh, residential code.
Now, they can do anything, that's why we do the planned developments, so the planned development, we can negotiate to get the basic requirements. But when somebody just goes and does a one-off house, the state legislatures decided, we didn't know what we were doing, and so, they've basically taken that out of our.
Yeah, so basically, uh, if you're adopting a building code, which we are required by state law to do, any, any approved material that's in the building code, you can use that to build. So wood, metal.
Arid ore.
Arid ore, yeah, anything, you can use anything, anything that's in the building code, you can use that to build the city as I was saying. They did that, yeah, last time.
Josh, you know, I remember, but I thought as a city, it was still casual.
Well, we can't, in certain circumstances, we can make some, uh, some, uh.
And it's like, it's like new developments that are planned.
Well, well, not, well, not, it's, it's even more, it's even more specific than that, so even if P D is an ordinance. So, we, we can't enforce any ordinance, that's the definition right now, what's happening is we have a development agreement that's involved, so any type of development goes in that requires public infrastructure, that's when we can have a development agreement, and that's when we can include basic requirements. But the common example is D V A, that was the first project that we had to approve, and they waited to submit the flat until after the.
This is just to give you a bigger.
To be developed. Now, typically speaking, like, so we're gonna start seeing some commercials, uh, Starbucks, Panda, Express, and other things. Now, they have, we're not necessarily, now, we have a, a grocery station overlay, you're part of it, so we can't even enforce those anymore. Now, with that said, they have kind of standards in how they deal, and it's not, so we're not really worried about commercials so much anymore. It's just likely what you're sitting now is one off residential projects, that's whatever's in the building code, they can use.
Well, now, what about if they're really in, you know, house burns down and. There's no notice. Does there, in a way, require?
Yeah, so there, there, there needs to come, it's there, right?
I would add that Texas Municipal League thinks this statute will be changed this next session, but I'm kind of fearful that with everything kind of being COVID-related, uh, next session, then that probably won't occur, but, you know, I'm still optimistic.
Not only that, but redistricting is gonna be.
It is, exactly.
Probably gonna be the only thing they're giving.
Yeah.
All right, Angela, you still have a question?
Oh, yes. There was a house on my street that has not been moved forever. And the house is in really bad shape, I, and I hate to bring this up, but it's embarrassing for us to have people over, present that. I know a lot of people take very good care of their properties, still get, you know, notice, like, inspection. That gentleman, I don't ever spank.
Is this on Lake?
Yes.
Down for, down for Nina's old house?
Yes.
Yeah, I've talked, Aaron, I've talked to, uh, Charles one time about that, and I don't know that anything was ever done, but I know which house it is. I think he was gonna go out and look at it, but, uh, sounds like we're getting some more complaints, so if we're ready to get him to go back out and check that one.
Yes, I sure will, I sure will.
Does that have an X away?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Anybody else?
And it's a church, I was not even aware that you could have a church in a residential.
Now, you can have a church anywhere. It has to meet certain restrictions, but if you have a subdivision, and somebody wanted to put a church in it, you gotta do it.
Well, I don't see a lot of attending.
But they have to meet certain requirements, and so, it's almost like, you know, requirements. Anybody else have anything?
I have a question I'd like to ask Terry.
Okay.
But I don't.
Yes.
Requires executive session or not, uh, it's concerning the, uh, recusal by the judge.
Oh, let me just say, we don't know any of the details about that, it just occurred.
Okay.
And.
Have we gotten any idea how that's going to affect the outcome or, or the proceedings?
It's been assigned, I'll say, it's been assigned to a new judge, and we're waiting to hear from his, his office about the docketing of it, or, or their, their action on it. So, nothing yet, it just happened last week, so we're, we're kind of, we'll, we'll let you know once we hear something.
Okay, thank you.
The future agenda items request, I have one, I would like to see us change the subdivision ordinance, whatever it is, to say, our maximum fence building height is eight feet. So we don't have to have people come in here and go through all these hoops, every time, just to get an eight foot fence. I think in most cities, eight foot's pretty standard. Uh, we can say six, but if they want it, but if somebody wants to put up an eight foot fence, I don't see an issue with that, I don't think that you have to come in and spend extra money to do that.
It sounds logical, Joe, I think, just, uh, you were, I, I'd like to get please input on that as well.
Yeah, so what, what's somebody doing?
Yeah, is there some, there's some safety related issues as well, depending on where, where it's at.
Anybody else have anything else they'd like to go? Right, not we're during the eight nineteen.
See everybody later, bye-bye.
All right, thanks, Terry, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.